There we go, and we are live. With that, I'll go ahead and call us to order the regular meeting of the City Council for May 6th, 2024. First order of business will be invocation and pledge of allegiance. It'll be led by Councilmember Shin.
Our Father, we come before you tonight and ask you for wisdom and guidance in what we need to do for our city. Pray for a blessing upon it. We pray for our first responders so that you will protect them as they protect us. Pray that you will lead us through tonight Christ and we ask. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Y'all have received a copy of the minutes. There was an updated copy placed on your desk for arrival that basically just changed the second to last paragraph on page three where it said Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Gardner to Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Gronwald there. So y'all have received a copy of those. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes, I'd make a motion to accept the minutes as amended.
Second. We've got a motion in a second. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Right there where Councilmember Gardner and Councilmember Gardner was changed, I don't see where the final vote was ever mentioned here. I think it was, I think it passed eight to nothing, but I don't, I don't see that. Am I missing it?
Yes, it should, it should state that ordinance 1117, because we had multiple readings and then that ordinance was voted on and passed, and I also believe it was unanimous. Is there anyone who voted against that ordinance? That was the, the dog ordinance that we, that was ultimately passed? Okay. I'll interpret what you're saying, Councilmember Mosley, is a motion to amend the minutes to include the vote total on ordinance 1117 to be unanimous.
That's exactly what I said, thank you.
So we've got a motion in a second. On amending the minutes, all those in favor, signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Then we've got a motion in a second approving the minutes as amended. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That brings us to public comments. I have one public comment card from Kelly Wall. Come on down, name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
Okay, can y'all hear me? I know I'm a day late and a dollar short on this. I think I missed the council meeting where y'all talked about the festival, the four-day festival, and I was at a legislative reception, but I did want to come in and tell you all how much help the city was for that festival. Courtney Dunn, your economic developer, was there with me from 7:00 a.m. till 11 o'clock every night. So were Phillip and Gordon and the Parks Department. They were there with us bright and early in the morning till late at night. Deb Roush, Beatrice Souza, Doreen and Vivian were there all weekend long driving golf carts for us, and so I just want y'all to know how hard the city employees worked on their weekend off, on their time, to help us with that, and how exciting it is that we, you know, they wanted to help us accomplish that. So I just wanted to brag on them. Oh, I forgot Scott Grummer and his team, too.
Thank you. Hang on just a second. It looks like our live has gone down for the first time in a while, so let me see if I can get that back up. If you'll excuse me for a moment. I'm going to go ahead and proceed unless... All right, I'll go ahead and proceed with the council meeting, I guess. Absent objection to wait for that Facebook stream. The next item of business. Planning Commission report. Councilmember Tierney?
Yes. A multi-part ordinance that is first on tonight's agenda deal or dealt with 11 changes to the master land use.
Pardon me, I, let me get your mic set up, and then I guess Councilmember Mosley had your button hit before that?
No, I, I just wanted to, I don't think Kelly Wall was at the last meeting. I just wanted to tell her that everybody was raving about the festival and what a nice job y'all did, so thank you.
All right, thank you. And then Councilmember Tierney, I'm sorry, let's get your mic.
All right.
Go.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
All right, a multi-part ordinance, that's the first item on tonight's agenda, dealt with a master land use map at the last month's planning commission meetings. One of those changes, there were 11 of them, that one of them dealt with land bordering the Country Club of Maumell, which was pulled because it was considered too complicated. The other 10 passed unanimously. A replat at 12805 Maumell Boulevard was deferred until May by the applicant at their request. The, a conditional use to allow residential use within the PCD zoning district on the proposed Carnahan Square Development passed unanimously. This will allow townhomes with commercial ground floors, much like those in the proposed town center, with added limits to their residential density. The proposed amendments to the master land plan, master zoning map, and conditional use permit for the proposed Gateway Park at 101 Millwood Circle all passed unanimously. The second reading of ordinance 1118 amends chapters 94, oh, hold on, I'm getting into our minutes, what we're doing today, I guess, so, yeah, so that was everything I had.
Thank you, sir. That'll bring us to the procedural motion. At this time, entertain a motion to have all ordinances and resolutions read by title only.
So moved.
Motion in a second. Any discussion on that? All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. If y'all don't mind, I'll wait until we get to actual substantive issues here. As soon as I get the thumbs up, then we're live. All right, so just for those that may be watching live, our stream is not working, so you've got the Facebook feed from phone right now. If you're really interested in the details of the meeting, you can come back. Hopefully, by the end of tomorrow, we should have the full video uploaded onto YouTube for you. So with that, we'll proceed with unfinished business. The first item of unfinished business is the second reading of ordinance 1118, amending chapter 94-1 of the zoning regs. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1118, an ordinance to amend the Maumell City Code zoning regulations to provide for outdoor amusement and recreation establishments and for other purposes.
Thank you. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. If there is none, this will be on third reading at the next city council meeting. That brings us to new business. The first item of new business is the first reading of ordinance 1120, amending the master Maumell land use plan and map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance 1120, an ordinance to amend the city's land use plan and map for several areas in the city and for other purposes.
All right, I'll go, well, so this is the, Maumell City Code 54-81 says that every five years, there will just be initiated internally with the Planning Commission and staff, a land use plan amendment or examination. This is that ordinance, and so I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion if there are any questions on this or comments. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, this is actually something that I think the Planning Commission's been working on here for quite a while, so I was wondering if Mr. Grummer could give us an overview and, and that sort of thing, just to get everybody up to speed. There's a couple items, I think, that you've got on there that are, that would be under that new zoning, and I can't remember what it is, S U R, is that it?
S U C, sir.
Okay, and, but anyway, if you wouldn't mind, give us a little overview. I think, I think everybody'd be interested in what items are changing.
Yes, sir. So as you mentioned, Planning Commission has been looking at this for quite a few months. We've been taking it into subcommittee. There's a list of items that we've looked at around the city that we've suggested for modifications of land use based on changes to the areas. That list was in front of you on that, in the agenda. Overall, you've got some areas that were currently zoned PCD with an underlying land use of commercial. We've suggested the change from commercial to S U C so that that lines up better with the PCD-type zoning, which was approved, an amendment to the, adding the S U Z land use type. And then you've got a change in the industrial park area on Carnahan Drive, the commercial industrial to institutional in areas that are currently being utilized as institutional, such as the schools. So these are mainly just cleanup areas, things on our land use. And then out on White Oak Crossing, there are some changes from S, I'm sorry, S U R, which is zone PRD that are along White Oak Crossing, that's the number fours on there. Those are suggested changes to commercial because we're seeing more commercial activity along the White Oak Crossing, provides more opportunity for commercial growth along that roadway and serving that area. And then there was an item that was taken off the list. You'll notice the Country Club of Arkansas is currently land use of S U R with a zoning of PRD, being that that was a golf course. We were suggesting it be turned to open space, but after discussions with the owner, we decided to pull that for the time being because it's always been zoned that, and further discussions with the city are probably needed before we do any changes on that. So that was pulled, and Planning Commission approved the recommendations with that not being on there. Other than that, we've got some area down on Crystal Hill, number 11 down there that is zoned for single-family detached, which it doesn't really conform anymore to single-family based on the development patterns that are happening in the areas. Our recommendation is for an S U R, which provides a little bit more, can still be single-family, but would provide other options such as townhomes or multifamily as needed because it's closer to the Boulevard down there. And that's a summary, pretty much.
Okay. Excuse me.
Go for it.
Okay. So there's, there's three, three areas that would get this new, new land use and zoning that we've approved here this spring. Is that right? Track D, the item down there by Crystal Hill Road, and what was the other one now? I've lost it.
So the...
Oh, would it be, is it the one on Maumell Boulevard?
So Track C, Track D is recommended to an S U C land use, and then the one on Maumell Boulevard, which is right behind Christian Brothers on the southern part of the city. That's currently commercial that, with a PCD zone, so that's recommendation to S U C.
Okay. Okay, so Track D, that one, and then the one down on, was it the one on Crystal Hill Road was also S U C?
No, the one on Crystal Hill Road was S F D, that's single-family detached.
Okay.
So on Crystal Hill, that's been recommended to an S U R, which is a special-use residential land use.
Oh, okay. Okay. All right. Now, for all these, you've had to go back to the landowners and they had to be in agreement with these, is that correct?
All the landowners were notified, yes, sir.
Okay, so they're all happy and they, I assume the zoning was such that it, it made them happier than it gave them more options and that sort of thing?
For the most part, yes, sir.
Okay. All right, I think that's all I've got.
Any additional discussion? All right, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. That brings us to the second item of new business, which is Resolution 2024-15, approving a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2024-15, a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for residential uses in a planned commercial district, zoning district on out parcel one, Carnahan Village subdivision, and for other purposes.
Thank you. Scott, would you like to come on down and tell us about this?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this, this item is for conditional use only for a parcel that is right across from Domino's Pizza on Club Manor. It's an out parcel from Carnahan Village, which is a single-family detached residential development that was developed several years back. The proposal, the proposed is to allow for a mixture of residential and commercial. If you remember, we updated the PCD zone to allow for a mixed use in these type zones as well as included the, and changed the land use of special-use commercial to allow for a mixture of residential. The development plan and plat, as well as the elevations, I'm sorry, it's already been platted, but the development plan, commercial elevations, landscape plan, those will come later. They're still going to have to take that through Planning Commission as well as bring it through City Council for approval. So what they're trying to do here is just get the entitlement to get the plan together to bring to you with a proposal for the development with a mixture. What you'll see in the site plan that was provided, it has buildings oriented towards Club Manor and Carnahan Court. The buildings are pulled up with the parking in the rear, so it gives a little bit more of an urban feel. The buildings fronting Club Manor are proposed to be office-retail first floor, and they've put on here for a residential use in the above floors as an option. Originally, when they came through, they had buildings, let's see, three, four, and five as townhomes, four units in each one of those, and then the remainder being office. They, the ordinance does provide for, in the PCD, an option for lofts above the commercial, and they're wanting to leave that door open until they bring the plan forward with that. So ultimately, if all they did was the townhomes in the rear, that was about 6.8 units per acre. If they bring lofts in, then they're asking for up to 12 units, which would provide no more than 19 to 20 units, depending on how they do it. But ultimately, you would have commercial frontage all on Club Manor and commercial frontage all on Carnahan Court, and then the remainder would be residential.
All right, thank you, sir. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, sir. Now, this is a, what's called a site plan, site plan. Is that anything that's actually been approved by the, by the Planning Commission, or is it just something that they've submitted along with this conditional, saying this is kind of what we want to do?
So this is not an approved site plan, but it is being part of the conditional use approval, showing the layout so that you can better orient as to where the commercial and the residential is going to be. More than likely, the site plan will move through just like this whenever it gets to the development plan stage.
Okay, I missed some discussion. I was at the Planning Commission meeting, and I missed some discussion. Had to go outside for a minute, and I was curious about, you know, if we do a conditional use here and something changes about this, if, if the site plan isn't what actually used to, for all the other filings, do they have to go back and get another conditional use, or what's the deal?
So the, the conditional use is strictly for the residential use in a PCD. So what you're, what you're allowing as the conditional use is a condition to allow for residential in a PCD. They still have to comply when they come back through with the PCD zoning ordinance, which has all the, all the updates that provides more restrictions, provides more criteria by which you can base your decision on. So they still have to meet all of that, but what, what this will do is just strictly allow for residential up to 12 units per acre.
Okay, why, why couldn't we just wait and do this conditional use after all those other things have been submitted so we know exactly what they're doing?
And that's, you know, the tricky thing with these is to provide all that, you have to do architectural drawings, there's, there's a lot of expense that goes into pulling all those plans together, and they would at least like an entitlement showing that the City Council is willing to accept residential in the PCD versus spend all the money for all of those plans, then bring it to you, and that be denied. So this is the first time that you're seeing this come through, so we're really trying to look at it, and we're, we're trying to cross our Ts and dot our Is. So what I'm focusing on is the ordinance that we passed and make sure that they comply with that when it comes through. But as far as the conditional use, it's just to allow the residential.
Okay. Who's the developer? Is it Mr. Brock? Is that who it is?
No, sir. He is the owner of the, of the land.
Okay.
But he is not the developer.
All right. Yeah, one thing, I, I had an email from a constituent over there in the country, in the Country Club area this week, asking, asking me for details, and you, I forwarded the email to you about, it was those townhomes that were built over there along Country Club Parkway. Some of those have become rental units, or most of them have, from what I understand, maybe only one actually sold, and all the rest are rental. Is that correct?
I believe, I believe one of the buildings is or is likely to be sold to a company that we suspect will use those units for rental units.
Okay, so what, what's the difference between those townhomes and apartments, then, if they become rental? I mean, is it just another, another name for, so maybe some nice apartments? Is that, I mean, what are we looking?
Apartments that I couldn't afford to live in, if you want to call them that. I, I don't know, that might be a nuanced question. I would think of something as, as like apartments if the company sort of ran all those buildings and leased out all of those units. This would be more on par, I think, and see it as when a new residential subdivision comes in, and a single person comes in and may buy 10 of the homes, right, in a, in a particular area, and then lease out those homes, which we see on a regular basis in subdivisions. So it, it might be more on par with that, except in a townhome sort of setting. It, it, if I was arguing the difference, one would be, one is an apartment complex or a single owner or company that's running all of those. What we're looking at, I think, is just one person buying one of those buildings that has, I believe, four units in it. So that's, I, I, correct me if I'm wrong. Well, the original development on the one you're speaking of, that was platted in a way that each unit is its own lot, so each unit can be sold to an individual buyer as an owner, and that was the intent of the development. To my understanding, I believe they're struggling with some of the sales. There's not individuals wanting to purchase townhomes for ownership, but there are, I guess, opportunities for leasing, so I've heard that there are some that have turned over now. The difference between that development and this one is that this is one, and correct me if I'm wrong, on the, I believe, yes, this is one lot to be developed with multiple buildings, so one owner for the entire development. That includes the commercial, residential, all components. So it's more than likely that whatever units are in here will be rental, it will not be owner occupied.
Okay.
Now, that's, that's what I'm anticipating. They don't have the development plan here yet, but what they're, but what you see here is more of providing variation of housing types for our, our town center area.
Okay, that's an important point, because I was kind of under the impression these would be for sale, but I guess not. Okay, I think, I think that's all I've got. I, I'll probably be voting no. I just, I've always promised my constituents no high-density housing, and this kind of comes under that, and so, and it bothers me that they'll be rentals. I'd rather see things being under private ownership, so that, that's my position. Thanks.
Councilmember Gardner?
Motion to adopt Resolution 2024-15.
Got a motion and a second to adopt Resolution 2024-15. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes. A roll call vote? Was there anyone that you thought might have?
Thank you.
We can do one. Is there anyone you thought might have voted?
I just wanted my, my vote on record as a no vote.
I, I believe that's how that goes anyways, but we'll do a roll call vote.
Okay.
Councilmember Mosley?
No.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
And for, I guess, for the, for the record, typically, the roll call votes, we'll do them anytime anyone asks, or if we are unable to discern who voted yes and no. So in, in, we'll do them anytime for any reason, but typically, the purpose is because it was unclear what the votes were or how a particular person voted. With that, we will move on to the next item of new business, which is the first reading of ordinance 1121, amending the Maumell land use plan and map. Madam City Clerk, if you'll please read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1121, an ordinance to amend the city's land use plan and map for the property commonly known as 101 Millwood Circle and for other purposes.
This is the old municipal building where Gateway Park is going to be, just changing this from commercial to institutional land uses for the, in anticipation for the Gateway Park being constructed. And I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. If there is none, that'll be on second reading next meeting. The next item of business is the first reading of ordinance 1122, amending the zoning map. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Yes.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Maumell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1122. Sorry, I lost my place. An ordinance to amend the city's zoning map and property commonly known as 101 Millwood Circle and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. Before I open the floor for discussion, I feel like we need to explain what that laughter was. Somebody up here opened a drink and poured it, and it sounded delicious and refreshing like a commercial, and those that could hear it laughed, and those who didn't, or those at home or in the audience might not know why everyone was laughing. It was not laughing at the city clerk. Ordinance 1122 is just the, the changing the zoning from PCD to open space at the area for Gateway Park in anticipation for the construction of Gateway Park. I'm going to open the floor for discussion. If there is none, that'll, oh, Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I'm just going to ask, if we get an open space with, is the food truck business, is that going to kind of conflict with open space, or is...
To a certain degree. To a certain degree, yes. And so what we would need is a conditional use, which is the next agenda item, to allow recreational facilities in, in open space.
Good.
And then it, Mr. City Clerk, if you had more to add? It's Mr. City Attorney? Any additional discussion? All right. That brings us to the next item of new business, which is Resolution 2024-16, approving a conditional use permit. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Monmel, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled Resolution Number 2024-16, a resolution to approve a conditional use permit for a municipal recreational facility in an open space zoning district at 101 Millwood Circle and for other purposes.
Councilmember Williams?
Motion to adopt Resolution Number 2024-16.
Got a motion and a second. So this is the conditional use permit that would allow us to construct recreational facilities on the area that is anticipated to become open space. It is contingent upon that zoning ordinance changing and being amended at that time. Any additional questions or comments? With nothing further, I've got a motion second to adopt Resolution 2024-16. All in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. All right, so the next item on the agenda shows to be the first reading of ordinance 1123. I'm going to take a pause here and what we'll actually have is the presentation from the elected official compensation committee. Before we do, I want to, I included a memo in the council packet that y'all saw, but I think it's important to point out just for the record. And I'll just read that right quick. Monmel City Code 2-564 requires that a committee be established in the month of January of every even numbered year to consider the compensation of elected officials. The elected official compensation committee is charged with analyzing the compensation of all elected officials and making recommendations to the city council concerning the same. The code requires that those recommendations be presented in the form of ordinances sponsored by the mayor no later than the first regular city council meeting in May. The committee consisted of four citizens and two members of the city council. The members of the committee were as followed. Jeff Van Patton, chairman, Michelle Elliott, David Ruer, Justin Simpson, Councilmember Christine Gronwald, and Councilmember Terry Williams. Pursuant to City Code, the elected officials' compensation committees' recommendations are being presented to the city council as ordinances at the first meeting. I've requested that Chairman Jeff Van Patton present the committee's findings and recommendations to the city council. And we will do that now. Mr. Pat, Van Patton, come on down. Name and address for the record, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and members of the city council. I'm Jeff Van Patton. My address is 131 Manor 2. Been here 19 years, Memorial Weekend. So been here a while. First of all, thanks once again for the opportunity to, to work for the city. And I want to thank again the members of my committee, Ms. Terry Williams, Ms. Christine Gronwald, Justin Simpson, Michelle Elliott, and David Ruer. We met a couple of times, also had, had lots of discussions by email, which was very effective. And I wanted to say that, that I, a lot of thought went into the, the recommendations that we're bringing to the council and, and the mayor tonight. First of all, we, we recommended that the, the mayor's salary position, well, let me back up. I, I think it's only appropriate that I give my Jamie Still speech. If y'all remember Jamie from, he was a, a council member from the past. And, and Jamie, about eight years ago, when I started on this committee for the first time, Jamie made a big point and that was, we're working to, to put down the salary for the position. Not an individual that's here tonight or next year, but for the position. And, and we're, the idea would be that we want, we want to make those positions competitive so that people would run for the position and run for office and these elected officials. So that's, that's really our, that was our, that's our mission and that, that's, that's what, the, the thought the whole time. Chad, you may remember a couple of years ago, we, we did the same thing. So, so anyway, first of all, we, we recommended that the, the mayor's salary be increased 5% to put the salary at 107,374 for the next two years. This salary is within the top six of the peer cities. Really right in the middle. And, and most of these recommendations, that's where these positions are. Some of them upper middle, but still right in the middle. And let me, let me just read for a moment who our peer cities are. And we, we use Cersei, Cabot, Russellville, Bryant, Sherwood, Bellavista, Jacksonville, El Dorado, Perrigal, Van Buren, Centurion, and Salem Springs. And we decided these were peer cities. A little bit of thought process went into that. Every, every two years, sometimes we drop some off and sometimes we, we add some. But, but the idea would be, we, we would have peer cities that would be comparable to Monmel. And some cities are, are similar population, but they're really not the same. You know, they're, they're, well, there's just some things about them that, that's, that's really different and they're not comparable. So we're looking, in real estate parlance, we're looking for comps. You know, comps so that we can compare apples to apples and, and come up with our, a good recommendation. But we, we recommended that the mayor's position be increased 5% to 107,374 for the next two years. The salary is within the top six of the, of the group of cities. Next, we recommended that the, the Monmel City Clerk position be increased 6% to put the salary at 71,521 per year for the next two years. This salary is within the top three of the peer group of cities. Next, we recommended that the Monmel City Attorney position be increased 5% to put the salary at 110,252 per year for the next two years. This puts that salary within the top six of the peer group of cities. And to all of you on the council, we recommended that the, the council's salary be increased 12% to a salary of $8,400 per year for the next two years. Keep in mind, this is 900 bucks. And the, the council has not had a salary increase since 2020. So did not get a salary increase last time. So this increase would put the salary within the top seven of the peer group of cities. And another, another item that came up during the discussion when we were talking about the, the council salaries was one of our committee members recommended that it would be a good idea to, in the future, when the, when the city is reviewing its insurance, health insurance programs and what have you, to maybe make health insurance available for, for a council member or, or other part-time people. And I, I did ask that question and, and I was told that with the current, the current company that we have our health insurance with, that, that you have to be a full-time employee. But you may be interested to know that other cities offer benefits. Cabot, Russellville, Cabot offers full-time benefits for council members. Sherwood pays 100% of healthcare. Jacksonville does. El Dorado, healthcare. Perrigal Medical and Dental and Van Buren pays 100% for the council member. Not their family, but, but the council member and I. So I think to make, keep the city competitive, the, the thought was that in the future, when we're reviewing our, our health insurance program, maybe that's an idea to consider. You know, and maybe it's a reason to choose one health insurance company over another because they offer that option. And, and some of, some of the council members are like me, you're 65 and, and you know, you know, and it's, it's, health insurance is not a big deal, but, but not everybody is. And so it's, the idea is to keep our elected officials' positions competitive. And, and anyway, I wanted to mention that. The other thing that our committee came up with is, I have two recommendations to add. And, and one of those is for the council to consider with, for yourselves, for the council members, that in order to be effective, I think the discussion hinged on, on having enough council members to have a quorum and actually conduct the city's business. But if a council member misses five consecutive meetings, then on the sixth meeting, then they, they would only be paid for those meetings that they attended. Not just automatically paid for every, every meeting. And again, it's, I think, the discussion in our committee was more of, it's not the money. It's really the having quorum available so that, so that the, the council and the mayor can conduct the city's business. So that's, that's something for y'all to consider, I guess, at another date. But I, I just wanted to plant that seed out there so y'all could, could consider it. And, and I, I think I'm speaking for, for the wishes of our committee that was, we brought it up. Lastly, Christine brought up about the incident that happened at UAMS. She works for UAMS, I believe.
I used you. My husband does now.
Your husband does, okay. And, and, but she, she brought up a really good point. And, you know, we're talking about salaries and, and I think really protecting the city. And, and the idea was a hacker had hacked an insurance clearing agency for many hospitals, including UAMS. And basically for at least a week, UAMS was prevented from processing insurance payments for their patients. You know, not only Medicare, but private insurance and what have you, which was really a, a bad thing. They're just kind of bleeding dry, you know, that, that week because they couldn't do anything. And so our committee made the recommendation, and I, I presented to you tonight, that perhaps the city looks into hiring a professional IT or cyber consultant on a, on a consulting basis, not a salary basis, to do an annual review of the computer systems of the city and the council members as a, as a safeguard to prevent hacking and loss from hacking. And accordingly, take the preventive action that the IT or cyber consultant recommends. So yes, you would have to carve out some money in the budget to do that. But I, it, you know, when you look at the downside, it may not be a bad idea to do that. Just, just to cover everybody because I guess it just gets, those people just seem more aggressive every, every, every year or every month, you know, to try to figure out ways to steal from all of us. So just, just a thought. And I believe that's all. Mayor, do I have any questions?
Are there any questions? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I've got several here, just probably a couple for you. But, oh, when do these salaries take effect? Will they take effect for everybody this coming January? Is that how that?
The ordinances go into effect January of 2025.
2025, okay. As far as the cyber consultant there, it may be that our auditors do a little bit in that regard. Mayor, do you know if, you know if that's some of their procedures?
The auditors, I mean, we have an IT firm that we hire that handles the cybersecurity aspects of it. I think the auditors do some. I don't think that they would be doing anything in the HR software.
Okay.
Which I believe was the, the, where the, the UAMS problem was.
All right. There's, yeah, there's various other things they could mess with, I imagine, but. Let me ask you this. I've never thought of this. But are there, some cities, as far as the city clerk slash treasurer or just city clerk, do, do some cities call it clerk and some call it clerk treasurer? Did you find that when you're doing your reviews?
Auburn Mosley, we, in most of the peer cities, we, we were just, the information sent back to us was referred to as a city clerk.
City clerk?
Yes.
So I, I can answer that question.
Okay.
The city needs both a clerk and a treasurer. Or in smaller cities, I believe there were quarters and treasurers. That can be two separate elected officials. What we see in a lot of places and in Monmel is that the, the law allows those two positions to be merged into one. So she, the, the city clerk treasurer effectively holds two elected positions that are merged together. But the real expert on that would be Clerk Treasurer Timmons, being that she's the president of the Art and City Clerk Recorder Treasurers Association. Correct me if I've said anything wrong or if you have anything to add on that.
No, you covered it perfectly. And there's a difference that you have to consider if the city is first class, if it's second class. There are clerk recorders. There's just very, there's many variations and variables to consider. But it's very common for cities of the first class to have a clerk treasurer position. And those, a lot of the financial duties are handled by the finance director. So the finance director or treasurer, I think, is where a lot of the, you might be a little confused about the roles. But that's essentially how it works. And yes, I am the president of the Arkansas City Clerk Recorders and Treasurers Association, in addition to on the executive board of the Monmel Municipal League. I've had quite a bit of training.
By any chance, is it Municipal Clerks Week?
Why, yes it is.
I'm used to saying, having to bring that up in the FYI resolutions. Thank you. And maybe more to your point, and this is extra information that may aid kind of in what you're asking. What you will see a big difference is, is between cities is what those duties are.
Yes.
And a lot of those duties are handled or sort of prescribed multiple ways. State law handles some, the ordinances handle some. And then just the day-to-day practice of being in the office handles other things. So for example, if you go into the City Codebook and look at the duties of the City Clerk Treasurer, there's a lot of stuff that maybe doesn't typically fit into City Clerk Treasurer and would typically be more under the, under, somewhere else, under sort of the mayor's umbrella, if you would.
Okay, okay. Oh, let's see here. Oh, as far as positions, it seems like the, I might ask just the city attorney to check into this if, if we don't know. I think the city attorney is a full-time position. And I was going to ask the city attorney if he could check and see if the mayor and the clerk are also both full-time or if they're considered part-time.
I will check. I mean, I think they're full-time in practice. Are you asking whether it's classified somewhere as a full-time or part-time?
Oh, yeah. Yeah, within our code, I guess.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
I don't, I, I've not come across that, but I, I will check our code.
All right, thank you. I think that's all I've got.
Any additional questions or discussions? We, we can get into the different jobs specifically when we get to those ordinances, but for Mr. Van Patton? All right, just a heads up. So what you'll see here is the three ordinances for the mayors, city attorneys, city clerk treasurers, council members. And then I added also the recommendation, the city attorney drafted some language to do our best to meet what that first extra recommendation was, that, that, you know, missing a lot of meetings. We didn't draft, I didn't ask the city attorney to draft anything over IT. That just seemed really, it, it affects payroll, but is, I think, outside of the scope of the, the committee. And then, so I didn't draft an ordinance there. So that won't be talked about separately, but keep, keep that in your mind if the council does want to do that. That said, we do have an IT, you know, an IT company that has, our security and cybersecurity has skyrocketed the last several years, much to the chagrin of many people as we are off- much to the chagrin of many people as we are authenticating ourselves, it seems like every five minutes for one app or another and the like. But with that, thank you for your work, Mr. Van Patten.
Thank you.
And to the committee as a whole. And with that, we will move on to the first reading of ordinance 1123, amending compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could read up the title, please.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1123, and ordinance to amend the compensation schedule for the elected position of mayor of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
All right, I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. If there is none, it'll be on second reading at the next council meeting. All right, we'll move on to the first reading of ordinance 1124, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1124, and ordinance to amend the compensation schedule for the elected position of city clerk treasurer of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
I want to speak to this one. I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion, but first of all, I want to speak to this one. I think the the city clerk in this city does a lot more than you would traditionally see inside the scope of a city clerk. For example, IT, we have completely, IT and a lot of citywide contracts are not only logged but under the control and sort of under the umbrella of the city clerk. So, for example, IT and all the day-to-day chaos that goes on when you have 200 terminals and accounts and stuff like that.
Police cars.
Police cars, which are all 18 pieces of equipment per car, is under that. And and there's just a number of things. I'd encourage you to, and it's just a good refresher at this time, to go through and look at the duties of all of the folks, the council as well, just a good time of year, every two years, to kind of refresh your memory on that. And so I I don't know what the job duties of every other city are, but I know there's a lot that is the responsibility of the clerk and the clerk's office here that is not seen in other agencies. So with that, I'll open the floor for discussion. Mr. City Attorney?
Mr. Mosley, I have an answer for you. City attorney is defined to be a full-time position. City clerk is defined to be a full-time position. The city code does not define whether the mayor is a full-time or a part-time position.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Mosley?
Yes, I wanted to point out that the the amount in the ordinance for the city clerk treasurer does not match the memo from the committee. The committee recommended 71,521 and the ordinance says 71,251.
I entertain a motion to amend ordinance 1124, section one, to change that from 71,251 dollars per year to 71,521 per year. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Good catch. Is there any additional discussion? All right, that'll be on second reading at the next city council meeting. Which brings us to the first reading of ordinance 1125, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1125, and ordinance to amend the compensation schedule for the elected position of city attorney of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
I'll go ahead and open the floor for discussion. Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. I feel like the agenda should say more than just having these all titled the same. We are on the first reading of ordinance 1126, amending a compensation schedule. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1126, and ordinance to amend the compensation schedule for the elected position of council member of the City of Mammell and for other purposes.
All right, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be on second reading at the next council meeting. Which brings us to ordinance 1127, amending the city code. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 1127, and ordinance to amend the Mammell City Code to provide a prevent, a penalty for council members' repeated absences from meetings and for other purposes.
All right, so we had, this is the ordinance that came from the recommendation from the elected official salary task force. We had a couple of questions when we were looking at how to draft this. I know the city attorney did, and I know I did. But rather than start contacting committee members, I asked briefly the chairman, Mr. Van Patten, when he was here, what his understanding of what the council or the committee was wanting. And so we sort of caught, we put into language that. A little bit of history, back in the day, council members used to be paid per meeting, up to two meetings a month. So that went on. There was a a period in time where that changed through much, much ado about something. And it went to just a straight salary at that point. We all know the difficulties of of a scenario or situation where a council member is out for an extended period of time. And so I I guess the committee wanted to find a way to help incentivize actually showing up. It was our understanding when drafting it that it was upon six, you know, after five consecutive meetings missed, then if you missed the six, you wouldn't be paid. Presumably, somebody wanting to game the system could attend five, you know, skip five, attend one, you know. Skip five, attend one, skip five, attend one, skip five and attend one. But anyways, open the floor for discussion. Councilmember Gardner?
I was just curious to hear from Councilmember Gronwalder Williams, kind of where the number five came up.
Councilmember Williams?
Sorry, sorry, I did it again.
I want you to have a voice.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. We didn't want it to be a terrible penalty, you know. Five was a lot to us. We felt like that was very generous. You know, we got into a situation where we went a whole year without position two in Ward four, I mean, Ward one, being represented. Put us in kind of a, you know, kind of a catch there. And so we felt like, in our discussions, that five was a very generous number. And after the number five, you know, and you, we broke it down, how, what the payment would be per meeting that you would actually miss upon number six, you know, after that, you'll, you'll still be paid. I mean, you won't be paid after number five if you continue to miss.
Right.
So, yeah, it was, you know, we felt like any less than that would be kind of a, kind of a strangle. Any more than that would be too much. So we just kind of fell in the middle there, just like, you know, the other peer cities. We we checked the peer cities and to see if others had similar ordinances or anything like this, and nobody did. So we felt like maybe, we didn't know if they had been caught in that kind of situation before, we didn't ask that question. But maybe by us doing it, we would, you know, blaze a trail ourselves. Christine, is that, is that how you?
Councilmember Gronwal?
Yes, you you said that perfectly. My only thought was, when I read how this actually turned out in the ordinance, in in my thinking process, it wasn't necessarily the five consecutive meetings, but five total. It could be consecutive, it could be total, so that you don't run into that sticky wicket that you just mentioned.
And we, again, we put it just in the ordinance, so we had something. It can be, if if this doesn't represent what the the intent to the committee was
Yeah.
or what the council wants, all of these can be amended, passed. They don't need to go back, refer back to the committee.
Yeah, and to her point, that is true. And we felt like it would be five in a year.
Right.
And more than five in a year. So that we, we felt like that was pretty generous, too.
Yeah. And also, to your point, Mayor, I think we did talk, find out from a couple of other cities, and it sounded like they mostly pay per meeting like we used to. So like, like you said.
There were very few that were salary positions.
Right. So they they don't, I guess, run into this, but, or haven't. But, yeah, I mean, according to what you said, it was just a, we thought a fair number because certainly things can happen. So we wanted to be sensitive to that. And we just felt like that was, we we also kind of looked at it as a percentage of how many meetings that were required to attend. Because I think it's round about 24 per year.
They only meet once a month, you know.
Right.
And so we felt like, considering the fact that we meet twice a month, and this is not the only thing we do as a, as a city council member. We have other duties to our constituents. So we did take it seriously, and we we didn't want to really get into another position like we were in for a year that we just had to, we had to just deal with it.
To me, five, five meetings, if we're meeting 24 times a year, that's, you know, that's more than 20%. If you're missing more than 20%, then that's a significant loss, you know, for the, for the city's business. And like Jeff said, it's it's not really for the money, but in my mind, it really is because we're supposed to be so fiscally conservative. And because of the situation we've been in in the past, I was lost money from from the city.
When you say it's about the money, you're talking about the
The salary.
The, the, the
Yes, the expense to the city.
Okay.
What?
I was, you, you were, you were saying the council member position is not about the money.
No.
And but you said, but for me, it is.
No, no, no.
And I'm throwing you a little bit of bone and saying, you're, you're referring to what happens if a council member misses.
What Jeff said, when he, when he spoke, what he said was, the reason this came up, the reason we were talking about it, and we felt strongly about it, wasn't really because of the money. But in my mind, it's it's twofold. It is because of the money. And I think several people on our committee did feel like we want, we want to put something in place so that this expense to the city is not, I mean, we we lost some money due to the previous situation.
Well, it's an accountability issue, too.
It's an accountability, yeah. So to me, it is twofold.
So to, anyway, so we'll continue on. If there is a desire to change this from five consecutive regular meetings to five meetings in a calendar year, that's something that can be made by motion. But I have a few more buttons, 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 buttons. Councilmember Holt?
So we are talking about five consecutive meetings, is that right?
We're, the ordinance says five consecutive meetings. There's discussion that maybe it should be changed to five per year?
I would think that the, the five consecutive, anyone could have a, an illness or something. But if it is consecutive and and they are able, after that five meetings, to be able to recover or whatever and come back, they can resume their council membership. Is that correct? Do they don't lose their membership or their position as a councilman?
Correct. And until they attend the next meeting, they do not get paid.
They don't get paid?
After you've missed five, as it's written in the ordinance, after you've missed five consecutive, you don't get paid for council, you don't get paid a salary until you show up to a council meeting.
If it's just five times during the year, everybody has some kind of occasion, whether it's to take care of children, take a vacation, whatever it is. Five days out of 12 months. It it could, I don't think I've missed five days in a year, I don't believe, but it it could happen.
And really, the way that would work if we were doing it per ye, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. No, it's all right. Well, it would seem that if if you feel like there is a callous intent on their part is one thing. Now, I don't know how you prove that, or or if it's just a, something they can't avoid, then that's two different things.
And really, it's six, because you you get five free misses and then you just don't get paid until you attend after that. So five free misses out of the 24. But anyways.
I'm finished.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I kind of agree with Councilmember Holt on this, and I don't have any problem the way it's written. I I think that's probably the, what is it, the Goldilocks deal? I think that's just about right. So I'd all vote for this. So, thank you. Oh, oh.
Hang on. There's not an undo button. There we go. Yes, sir.
In case nobody has a chance, I wanted to thank Mr. Van Patten and his committee for all the work they did. He may have already left, but
He was hanging out in the lobby.
Okay. Anyway, I wanted to thank him and all of his committee members, their volunteers, and so it's, we owe him some thanks for for going through that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you. Yes, I would agree with what Mr. Holt said as well. I I I think that it's needed to some degree, and I think that five consecutive, it it puts a carrot out there. I guess the only thing that gives me pause is the the predecessor that sat in this seat before me and his battle with cancer. And he missed multiple meetings, was able to come back, but he's going through chemotherapy. And I guess that's the only thing that gives me pause. But you can't take away a person's elected position unless there's a recall election. So that person, oh.
They can be prosecuted for malfeasance, misfeasance, or what some cities do in cases where people just are AWOL for years or refuse to come to meetings because they don't want to quorum, and that's their way of stopping things, is non-feasance. So malfeasance, misfeasance, non-feasance, it has to be charged criminally and convicted. It's a misdemeanor.
Well, now we've learned something.
Now you've learned something.
City attorney, can we have a definition of feasance by our next meeting? No, no. No, but I I think that's good.
Doing a really bad job? Non-feasance is no job?
Yeah. No, I I like it as written as well. I think that the intent is to have people here. And if you're not here, then you you shouldn't be paid by the taxpayers because you're not doing the job that you were elected to do. I guess that's, the only thing that gives me pause is that, you know, a situation where someone is legitimately sick and cannot be here. But there again, they, they're still a council member unless we charge them with a feasance of whatever degree.
Which doesn't happen very often. Because anyways. Councilmember Gronwal?
Yeah, I'm I'm happy to also, like, pass it as as written. I just wanted everybody to kind of consider that, whether it's consecutive or total. So my only thought about the, going back to the total, is also in thinking how board, boards of directors, you know, bylaws and things requiring them to come to meetings. We all know when those meetings are 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 going to be every year, the first and whatever third Monday of of the month. And so I think, I think that's where I come, I struggle a little bit with the consecutive versus the total because since we know ahead of time when these meetings are, I think we all do do our level best to schedule around those. And I I think to some degree that we should. So I I don't know. I go, I go back and forth, but I'm I'm also happy if everybody else is comfortable with this wording to go ahead with the consecutive.
Councilmember Shin?
I was discussing this at work, and one of my coworkers said, why don't you have a Zoom option? That you could exercise twice a year or something like that. So when you have something come up where, like, I know you had family issues. Both of my parents died, and I spent eight trips to Florida in eight months. And some of those, I was sitting, having the financial committee, I mean, the salary committee meeting online on the phone, trying to still participate. I don't know if there's anything we can do with it. I don't know how that's regulated.
Up until COVID, you couldn't, you could, you, you, it was just not allowed at all under state law. They created a provision that allowed us to have council members remotely call in. But I think there had to be, and and then we passed an ordinance, I believe the state law still only allows it in specific instances. And the city attorney may no more can look into that. During, during COVID, and prior to COVID, it was not allowed at all. It then became allowed for very specific purposes. We passed an ordinance that kind of echoed some of what the state said, and there had to be a public health declaration and all these sorts of things. So it might, it might still be something prohibited, but I'm sure, since the city attorney took notes, we'll probably hear about it in four minutes. Mr. City Attorney?
I've come across this ordinance in our city code a few times, and and regardless, I think regardless of what
And regardless, I think regardless of what state law says, our city code as it's currently written would require a public health emergency or a public emergency of some kind.
Yeah.
To even avail us of that option.
Councilmember Holt?
Mr. Mayor, would the council agree to allow our city clerk to run a total between now and the next meeting for each of us as to how many days we have missed? I have no objection to anyone knowing. But, and to just look at each one of us, how many have we averaged one day at a time for each of us? And then have a look at that in comparison to the other alternative. I'm just asking.
Uh, so would the ci, would the, the city council allow it, whether you did or not, she could, if she wanted to? I, I would say it's probably, I mean, there's no automated way. She would have to go back to the minutes through every single one and count the absences. I would not recommend that as a prudent use of time. I don't think the argument is that any council member here, right, I don't think we're having any problems now that warrant this. This isn't something that's being initiated to solve an immediate problem. It was something being initiated by the salary task force to solve those rare situations that have happened in the past where a vacancy was there. So I, I, I would request, I, I would request the council not direct the city clerk to do that. It's a lot of work for what we're all agreeing, which is that there's not a problem currently on the council. But, but of course, the, the council makes such a, and I'm sure the city clerk. Councilmember Tierney?
Uh, yes. I think this is a, a good idea. I've had a lot of residents, you know, write me about this when the absenteeism was going on. A lot of people were upset about, you know, money being spent when there was no attendance. And so, you know, I, we've got to realize that things do happen to people. And so I think this is a good compromise that addresses the issue and, you know, you know, takes care of both the city and the council.
All right. Fun fact, and I'll stall here for just a second. Fun fact, and I should have thought of this. This might, this would be effective for those council mem, okay. So the law says that during the term of an elected official, you cannot decrease their salary or compensation. You can increase it, but you can't decrease it. Arguably, this would be a decrease for those ward positions that are up for reelection and will be starting a new term in January one. It could be effective there. But it might actually need to be an ordinance that is effective in two and a half years because some council members will be midterm. And so that's something that just thought of that popped into my head. Because this would arguably be a decrease or a potential negative impact to an employment position that I bet could be waived, but now anyways. Came up with a fun legal question. I'll tell you about some other time. Any additional, any additional comments on ordinance eleven twenty-seven? All right, this will be on second reading at the next city council meeting. With that, we will move on to the next item of business, which is Resolution twenty-two-four dash seventeen, amending the twenty-two-four general fund budget. Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution number twenty-two-four dash seventeen. A resolution to amend the twenty-two-four general fund budget.
All right. Classic example, I mentioned some things that are handled by the city clerk's office in the city of Mammell that typically aren't in other cities. The insurance program for vehicles and buildings is managed and maintained by the city clerk, who has been very diligent in getting some hail monies. Again, we've got more, another resolution to, all of this money that's coming in, we're asking to authorize those departments to make the repairs. So. And got a motion and a second, and I'd like the city clerk to talk about this just a little bit.
Just briefly, just to give you guys an idea, we have to file an individual claim per property or vehicle. Today, for that particular day, we have filed thirty vehicle claims, eight property claims. And it's not just a check yes or no type of form. It's pretty involved. So we're at the tail end, but just wanted to give you guys an idea of exactly how many claims were filed.
But here, here's a fun fact. Does that mean for all of those claims, we have to pay a deductible?
Well, why, no, it isn't. So what, what, because we are prudent of the city's money. What we were, we made sure of is that if you had damage, that we did file that claim. So we were able to get, for example, the aquatic center, community center, dominant center concession stand, softball concession stand, police department, city hall, Center of the Lake Animal Services, one deductible. So we were able to get new, we're getting new roofs. And we're talking hundreds of thousands of dollars that we're getting with only paying one claim.
Whoop, whoop. Um, all right, we had a motion and a second to adopt that resolution. Any additional discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. That will bring us to Resolution twenty-two-four dash eighteen to request Metro Plan prepare a transportation plan for the city. Madam City Clerk, all yours.
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas. A resolution to be entitled Resolution number twenty-two-four dash eighteen. A resolution to request that the Metro Plan prepare, a resolution to request that Metro Plan prepares a transportation plan for the city of Mammell and for other purposes.
All right. Councilmember Mosley, this is your resolution. So I will allow you to, please introduce it for us.
Yes, sir. We had Casey Covington before, so I think it was three me, three meetings ago. He talked about studies and traffic and that sort of thing that we can request from Metro Plan for no cost. And he gave us a warning at the end of his talk and said, we need to, he said, said, if we can't find ways to get, to keep more people from leaving town to go to work, we're going to be in trouble from a Mammell Boulevard traffic standpoint. And so anyway, I've, I've gotten, I've found out that the Planning Commission is actually, I think, asked Mr. Grummer to give us a verbal request from them that we either do, either and do a, an update to our strategic plan or, or do a traffic study so that they can consider all these things in the future. And so I called Mr. Covington about a week ago and said, asked him what he thought we needed. And he said, we needed to start with a transportation plan for Mammell, as he called it. So that's what I've put in this thing. It will take into account our, our roads that are within Mammell, you know, that we maintain and that sort of thing. And they should, and it will also take a look at the highways that come and go from Mammell. So I'm assuming that would be three sixty-five and Mammell Boulevard. And I don't know, perhaps it may touch on I forty and just, just take a look at her not, not, yeah, I forty and, and five thirty, whatever that is, four thirty. So anyway, I drafted this resolution. And so I thought I'd bring it to you tonight and see if we couldn't get the ball rolling on something like this. I think it behooves us to kind of know as much as we know going forward. As I mentioned in one of the wherethes, you know, Mammell's going to grow, but we need to do what we can to prevent or minimize traffic congestion on the Boulevard, the third entrance, city streets and, and all that. So any questions?
All right. Okay, so here are my thoughts. Interestingly, Casey Covington emailed Scott Grummer and I a transportation system report that Metro Plan was doing for Little Rock. And it was a draft. They may have adopted it by now. I'm not sure. It was from the middle of April. It was about, about as thick for anyone who printed off our agenda. It was about that thick. So I don't remember the pages I'd planned on bringing it in, but I stepped over it. Put it on the ground so that I couldn't possibly miss it. And I stepped over it on the way into the council meeting. It, it was very thick. And Scott and I were sitting down thinking about, like, is this worth it? Clearly, ours wouldn't be that big relative to Little Rock's. They've got a lot more roads. And we were, we couldn't really figure out what the report, which is done before a plan, how that would benefit us short of a transportation plan. They typically use this report, the transportation system report, to produce the master street plans. So when they're doing a comprehensive overhaul or review of your street plans, you would do a transportation system report that gathers all the information. The, and so I was talking with Scott and we were curious about several things. One, what are the resources on staff to do that? I called Casey and got some updates as to what might possibly be meant by a, a transportation plan, to which he asked me what I meant. And he goes, well, a plan is what, you tell me what's, what you want to be included in that plan and what to cover. So that's a whole, if, if we're going to go forward with that, that's, we really need to flesh that out. Otherwise, I can sit there and say, I, here's what I want covered in the plan, a corridor study or the different studies. You can look on Metro Plan's website and they have some transportation studies up there. Usually, they're very focused on a specific corridor, so maybe Markham Street in, in Conway. They're, they're focused on like a specific local area. They have some bigger regional ones dealing with like I six thirty from a decade ago. So really what those, what you want those plans to look like. And remember, so we're, we're also parsing out so that you all understand a plan is different than the report. Report is the step that they go through and they start getting all the data, analytics, information, and then presenting that information to us in a particular fashion that then we can do something with. Your plan in planning phase of a project is where staff resources would vary wildly depending on what we're wanting. Are we wanting a plan where you're getting the community to come together with charades and say, hey, are we? So, yeah, yeah, Councilmember Mosley, you're shaking your head. No. So it, it depends on what you're wanting the plan to be. A strategic plan, a comprehensive plan, a master transportation plan, a master bike and pedestrian plan. Have not only the data gathering and the reporting phase, but also the planning phase. And that just depends on how much of the public, you know, input you want into that thing. So let me, let me back up a little bit because what Councilmember Mosley's hitting on is, it's like throwing the dart and hitting it like right next to the bullseye. We're, we're going the right way with what we want. We're just a little bit off. So, in my opinion. So the, when, when Casey was here at the meeting, he said the very first thing that we should do, that y'all should do, is come up with a planning studies report. Okay? So a planning studies report can be done through Metro Plan for free, basically. And it includes a transportation component in it. And then that planning studies report is, if you've seen the strategic plan or any of the plans that we have, the first section of the report or the plan is almost always, here are the way things are. Here's your population. Here's where your growth are. Here's your numbers. Here's your demographics. Here's these steps. And then the plan is taking all that information, coming together as a community to figure out where we want to go and then putting that plan in going forward. So Scott and I were talking, and we've been talking about this for a little while. A, 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 a planning studies report includes a transportation component. The training, the planning studies report is necessary for a comprehensive or strategic plan, but it's that initial report gathering phase that we can have them do, which we've been talking about and have already been engaging with Casey on that. What I have been waiting for is, y'all may recall that we, that the council appropriated funds for a economic and fiscal impact analysis, for economists to come in and be able to use, study our land use, study the city's revenues, make determinations and get, provide guidance and data and spreadsheets that we can change and use so that we can look at what the bottom line to the city's budget is on the sorts of decisions that we're making. Is single-family residential, is it, is it still that old equation where a, a, a single-family residential home is a net drain on the city's budget? Or has the advent of the internet sales tax changed that? Such that residential properties are now income generating properties. Has that changed the way that, that algorithm and that, 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 that works? I think that a comprehensive plan, a planning document that is dealing with future roadways, zonings, where we want to zone stuff, what we want zoning categories to be, what areas should be zoned, how should we have city centers? What that looks like in my mind is a half picture if we don't know the fiscal impact that those decisions are going to have on the city's budget. We've been talking a lot about mixed use. I want to see what, like, come in and look at those numbers and help us figure out what is the net effect to the city's budget when we do that. We've been talking about and having residential areas just outside the city annex in, you know, we're, they're building homes and then annexing in. Is that a positive effect on our city budget or a negative effect? Like, would we rather not annex them and just let them be in the county or do we want to annex them in? What is the impact of those? All, so, long story short, I think the, the first step in what we've been working on in-house is that economic and fiscal impact analysis. We've got an RFQ out that I've talked with economic firms, primarily the firm that provided the economic analysis to us in the two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen strategic plan. They're submitting RFQs. Anyone else who wants to can submit them. Those are due May sixteenth, I want to say. So they'll be due here soon. I want to start that process with them and get them going and then move over to the planning studies report. Because we don't want the planning studies report, we want the planning studies report, I want the planning studies report to include some of the, to be based on the economic side that they're not going to be able to get from federal statistics and, and those things. I want that analysis or those findings that we're seeing through the economists also wrapped into that part. And then I think you have the planning component. So, long story short, I think this idea of knowing where we're going, it, it matches with what kind of I've been working on, but also then completely separate, the Planning Commission has been talking about wanting more comprehensive plans, planning documents that are an update to the strategic plan. We've been talking about it all the time. Transportation has always been a, a big issue. And so trying to tie all those in, we're, we're working on those steps. I don't think a resolution for this does, a resolution isn't needed by Metro Plan. But if we want to skip that and just kind of say, well, we'll continue down that, the, 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 the planning studies report will separate that from transportation and just hit transportation, then I, I, I either need y'all to provide me guidance as to what you mean by a plan, not just a report, a plan. What, is this a plan that we're wanting? It's, anyways, I've talked a lot. I'll shush for a moment. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, it's, it's entirely possible. He's renamed it the Planning Studies Report. I'm not sure. We did, he, he did mention the Little Rock Plan that, that they've just finished. Asked him if I could get a copy and he said, no, not yet, because they haven't commented on it. But apparently he sent it to you all. So you've seen it, but I haven't seen it. Because I would like, I, I actually, I was hoping to get that and be able to put that or at least have a, a link to where council members could look and see what it is you get for a transportation plan for Mammell.
I can show you. So the, the Little Rock Board of Directors, my understanding is they haven't even seen it. As a board member of Metro Plan, the organization that prepared the document, I received a copy of that.
Okay. The way he mentioned it, he said we should do, do that plan first and then build on that. He said we could ask for follow-up studies, kind of what you're alluding to, Mr. Mayor. He said we could ask for follow-up studies, kinda what you're alluding to, Mr. Mayor, where you focus in on a specific area or situation, or it said you can always, also he'd recommend a land use study, which I assume would be what's appropriate, land use for our traffic situation. That's, that's what I would like to see. Oh, we had an interesting conversation too, as far as that. If you can't bring some jobs, you're gonna be in trouble. I asked him about trying to bring corporate entities out here to Malmell. There's room for a nice corporate campus, I guess, there between our water tower and Odom, that big old area that's undeveloped. And he also, he said, that's a good idea, and he said, that's what I would recommend. But he said, I would also, he said, most of these big corporations are not gonna move their whole deal to there, but a lot of times they're needing to add some facility, and that it would be good to come out to Malmell. Say, for example, the back, back office of a bank or something like that, where they don't really need it, have it in the glass shiny headquarters, like along Highway 10 or something, sort of like, sort of Bank, Bank of OZK.
That's a beautiful building.
In fact, he actually used that as an example, he said, said, said they're, they're moving all the time. He said, he said, you could sure have your economic development people be polling, you know, prospects and ideas, and just put that idea in their mind that we can have some of that. But the idea is to get jobs out here to where people don't leave town. So that was something he, he wanted to emphasize. I'd really like to go ahead and proceed with something on traffic here, it's just, the, the problem is, is I would like to also see what, what that Little Rock plan looks like. I would be open to tabling this for another meeting and see if we can't get that to where I can include a link in the packet where everybody can look and see what that is. Because I, I would like to see what they came up with, it might be very valuable, so.
I'm seeing if, if they've got it public yet.
Once again, I'll remind you, this is free, it doesn't cost us anything.
He did, uh, well, Councilmember Gardner?
Thank you, Mayor. It's, uh, it sounds like the city, at the executive level being the mayor's office and the planning department level, have already started down this path. Is that, is that kind of what you were describing, Mayor?
A broader path aimed at planning in general. That includes transportation, but is, is, is planning in general.
Yeah, I, I, I just wonder, I, I feel like this is kinda putting the cart before the horse. We're asking for something when we have a bigger picture in mind of what, information we're trying to gather about our economy, what we want to go where, and transportation obviously plays a huge role in that. And I understand that it's free, but I also don't want to cause someone to do busy work when, yeah, I don't know, I just wonder if we're putting the cart before the horse? I don't know if that's an accurate description of this, but it sounds like the city is already moving down the path of gathering some more intelligent data that would then shape what we were requesting, so.
I, I will say the, the, so a transportation report is a very different thing than a transportation plan. Transportation plan, just to reiterate, a report is gonna tell us the state of the city and kind of what it looks like if things continue at the current rate. A plan is going to be, here's that, here's that information, and now what should we do about it? The, the plan is, here's the report, here's the facts, here's the way things are. Now how is, are, are us as a community going to go forward with the plan to do that? So, um, they're just, they're very different things. And I guess if, if given, I guess I'll be given the leeway to, to just come up with that process or to direct Metro Plan on how to do that? Councilmember Williams?
Well, I was curious, and I, I agree with what Chad just said. I think that's, he's saying where I'm going in my thought process. This economic and fiscal impact analysis that you're talking about, that sounds to me like something you would do first, and that would actually shape the other, the other issues that we're looking at, that we want, other information, data gathering that we're actually needing. But it starts here, from what I understand you're saying.
It, um, once we get, what, what I'm saying is, the current goal is, once we get movement on the economic and fiscal impact analysis study and get that going, we can start the planning studies report process. But we don't want that finished before the, I don't want that finished before the economic impact study, because we want that wrapped into the transportation and planning document, is the economic impact, which is something often missing, in my opinion, from a lot of these reports. And sort of what we're, what we've, what I've been doing is unbundling the strategic plan process a little bit. So back in 2012 and 2013, we had this big bundled strategic plan, right? And it included everything in the city, it was the idea, planning, streets, transportation, parks, block, you know, every, all of these different elements. We started with the transport, the active transportation, the bike and ped plan, and I've tried to been unbundling that from one big document, one big planning intensive document, and then trying to pull out pieces of that so that the groups and people most interested in that element are playing the biggest role in that. And then it could come together all at some time at the end with, with, with a big plan, but trying to gather those information. So to answer your question, I, I, I don't think we wait until the fiscal impact study is completed. We just wait until they're chugging, until I know when they think it'll be done, and then get an idea, and then we can start that planning report. Because they're gonna work independently up until the part that they're talking about, the economic impact, and they're gonna kind of wrap some of that into the planning studies report.
Well, I for one appreciate you doing this, because I know, and I feel like that our strategic plan from 2012 and 2013 is very outdated, very outmoded. And trends are, are going in a completely different direction than they were then. And I feel like you're being, you're being very proactive and foresightful in, in starting this already. And so have you, have you started this analysis, has it, has it, are the wheels turning?
We, yeah, so I worked with the economists to help, it's, it's weird when you have an idea of the types of things you want, but now I'm trying to put out an RFQ, right, a request for qualifications from other firms, saying, here's the sort of thing I'm looking for, tell me how you can do it. So we worked with them to get that, and then it's going through, it's been published a couple weeks ago, a week or two ago, I'm not sure, two weeks ago, to, and we're waiting for statements of qualification where any firm that feels that they can tackle that task will give us a statement of qualifications. We go through that process and rate the, the firms that have applied, select one, and then you scope the project, which if it ends up being the company I've worked with, already has a good idea of the scope, and then negotiate costs, it's, it's state procurement laws, basically, and city procurement. Once we get that, I'll know the timeline. So we're not undergoing a current economic study right now. Is someone listening to music?
What is that?
Is someone outside? Okay, okay. It's getting louder, I was beginning, at first I thought it was just. So, so, so that process is going, the study is, the study is not. It, it hasn't begun yet.
Got you, got you, okay, all right, you answered my question, thank you.
Councilmember Mazzone?
Yeah, one thing I know from years of strategic planning in the military is you, one of the hardest things to get is true facts on the ground. You can't do a plan if you don't have the facts on the ground. And you get the facts on the ground from multiple sources. And different areas of, different agencies bring different areas of expertise to it, and you want all that data to get a good, your plan's only as good as the data you have. So it sounds, if I'm interpreting this, the transportation plan may be step three down the road. But as far as a planning studies report or the transportation report, having someone else come in and look at the same data you're at with a different focus, I, I don't see a negative if we're gonna get good data and with a cost of the city to zero so we can tweak our, our going in plan and come up with a better plan.
Correct, so you're, you're not wrong. So like I said at the beginning, I've said at least a million words, it seems like. The, the, the planning studies report is far more comprehensive and includes a transportation system report. It, it includes that transportation analysis element. So we can, I, if all the, if all that y'all were wanting was a transportation system report, I, I, I'm on board with that, but then we're, we're having them do the report and do the, the other report, and we can just say we have two different reports, and it, it's included in the planning studies report. If what you're wanting is a plan, then that is where I'm saying, whoa, whoa, whoa. If, like, I, I don't think we should be doing a transportation plan until we know a land use plan. Are we taught, like, are we, there's been questions about other interchanges in the future. Are, are we talking about annexing? Is that what's happening? And if so, then what does that look like for land use? What is the fiscal impact on the city, how does that work? Or do we just plan a road or no road based on the way things are? If you're trying to get a more holistic plan, you have to have all that information. So we can, I'm not opposed to a transportation system report. You're gonna get it as part of what we're already going on anyways, if that makes sense.
So they'll be bringing this exact same data the city would? I mean, what, I think Metro Plan would have access to more.
Metro Plan is doing the planning.
So they're doing, so they're already, so they're the ones doing?
They're the ones that will be doing the transportation. And that's why, when Casey came in here, we, in fact, we'd been talking to, to me and Scott, planning. So even when, when Scott and I went on the Metro Plan benchmarking trip to Allentown, and, and these sort of planning things are not new. And, but the, the planning studies report is what we were looking at. It is what Casey Covington, I don't know what he said in private phone calls to people. I know what, I went back and watched the video. It's what he said the first step of the process should be on the record to the city council to address the sorts of questions that he was hearing from the council at the meeting. And so, that's, yeah.
And, and they're, we're working with them to do it, or are we doing it ourselves?
Metro Plan, Metro Plan.
Okay, got it, so we're already going through the first step.
I'm dragging feet on that a little bit, until we get the fiscal economic impact, which is not being done through Metro Plan unless they submit an RFQ, but that's not their willhouse, so I, I would doubt that. So that's, that's a separate planning process and planning.
Okay, I think I'm tracking that.
So, and that's a free planning report in the whole nine yards that includes the transportation report and analysis as part of that, but not a plan.
Got it, so if I understand, we're already starting to work economic plan with this, cause the transportation plan would be step three or four down the path, other than bringing stuff in. But it's including in that.
No, so, okay, here. It's, it's a mistake I made when I first got on the city council. I thought of a builder and a developer as the same thing. Raw land, all of a sudden a house pops up, a builder developed, I use those terms interchangeably. We cannot use the term plan and report interchangeably. They're very different things, with very, very, very different scopes of work and what goes into them. The transportation report is a part of the planning studies report. Planning studies hits and includes transportation, land use, zoning, various census dat, census data, other statistics, and the like. It's a very data driven, it's a, it's a data document. Statisticians love it. Somebody who wants a, a nice fun thing to talk about does it, so you'll love it, and that's a good thing. So they, but the reports are very different than the plans. The plans, we don't want a third party putting together a plan for us without us figuring out, us being, not just the council, but maybe the community, how do we wanna shape this? How do we wanna go forward? You know, that, that, a plan is a bigger thing. So the transportation plan is not what I'm talking about getting done here soon. A transportation report is included in a planning studies report.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's right, and so we're walking, we're already going down that path.
Yes. And fun fact?
Oh, no.
No, Metro Plan is, Metro Plan is proceeding with transportation planning reports for all jurisdictions already. Now that they've done the Little Rock one, they're going to use that and just start doing them for all member jurisdictions in that thing. So that is, but we don't wanna wait for that. Anyways, buttons, buttons, who's got the buttons? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I, I think transportation ought to really be top priority out here. If you ask any resident out here in this community, they're gonna say, their top priority of anything we do is so that they can get in and out of town to go to work. And we need to be very careful about what, how we grow. And I, I think we need to have the, the transportation looked at before we go into land use and all that. I, I don't think, you know, if you, you come up with everything else and economics and everything else, but it may not fit with transportation. It may be that we gum up the system here. So I wanna go back and, I wanna go back and talk to Mr. Covington again here. He's apparently told you one thing, and he's told me one thing. And I don't even know what a report, you know, he, he couldn't provide a sample, he gave you a sample. I don't know what it looks like. I'm gonna make a motion to table, table my resolution for a couple of weeks and just see where we are. I'm gonna go talk to Mr. Covington, maybe ask him to write us a memo, or, or a letter or something with his thoughts on some things. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna make that motion. I make a motion that we table, table this resolution 2024-18 for two council meetings. That would take us to the first council meeting of June, and we'll see what to do with it then.
And I asked the council, I've got a motion second to table resolution 2024-18, until what date was that?
Yeah, second meeting of June.
Second meeting in June?
Yeah, I think that'd be the 17th.
And I would, I would ask that the council just not table it and vote it down. Again, I, we still haven't heard what a plan, there's a resolution here for a transportation plan. There's no guidance on what, how the planning process is supposed to go. I'm not sure that it's even understood what a transportation plan is. And so I, I see no, I see no reason to continue just taking up time with stuff that is, I mean.
Mayor?
It's just something that, like, you should look at what a transportation plan is before you sponsor a resolution to have a transportation plan go forward. That Little Rocks wasn't a transportation plan, so even if it would have been provided, it's not a transportation plan. It's a transportation system report, those are different things. But, so that, is there any discussion on the motion to table resolution 2024-18? I've got several buttons, Councilmember Williams?
Oh, no.
Councilmember Gardner?
All right, so the discussion item now is tabling it for, until June 17th. I will vote no on tabling it until June 17th, because I agree with the mayor. I think we're going down two different paths here, and this path has already been started. So I will, I will later vote to table it indefinitely, or just vote it down, whatever. I, I agree, I think we're going down different paths. This was clearly already in process, and I don't think we need to interrupt and gum up the works here with this.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I don't, I don't appreciate being told I didn't do my homework, Mr. Mayor.
I, I was triggered saying that a little bit, I remember the time being a council member, and somebody, somebody said.
Mr. Lewis did that to you?
The, the, the issue, though, is I still don't think that, that, that anyone has told me what sort of plan we're talking about.
Mr. Mayor, I'm trying to, trying to, you called on me here. I, I consulted with Casey Covington. He said, I know what you guys are trying to do. He said, this is what I think you need. So, that's, that's the road I went down to come up with this. So, you know, maybe we're going to end up with something else. I'm still going to go ahead and talk to him, even if you guys voted down tonight. But, uh, it, it's all part of the process. I think we need to look at transportation, what, what we have left that we can grow, and, uh, just see how it all meshes together. So, so I think the overall picture is that, that we're at least trying to go do something. So, uh, I don't object to that.
Oh, and, and I think that is the, I think that is the problem. It, it, there's, there's an intention to make it look like we're trying to go do something that I think is muddling up us actually doing something. And, and that is going forward. I, I still haven't heard what sort of things we want in a plan. Is this a plan that you just want Metro Plan and the, and staff to put together? Is this a plan where we want council input, public meetings? What is the scope of the plan that, because effectively what you're all are directing me is to work with Metro Plan to put together a, a report and a plan. And I, and so at the very beginning, I said, if you all go forward with this, I need some guidance as to what you're meaning for the planning process. I, or I'll just tackle it myself. But, councilmember Shin?
The economic plan is what should be the most important thing right now, because that will dictate other important decisions about transportation. I roll out of here every morning. I roll in every afternoon. I go down Highway ten both ways. It's nice that they've got that big facility out there and some of those schools out there. None of those people live there. I ride with them all the way out to those places. Have to wait on them to turn so I can get on down the road. Coming home, same thing. We put in, if we want a corporate headquarters or something like that, that's great. It's going to add traffic. Depending on the type of commercial development we want, if we want fast food, truck plasma, something like that, it's all car counts. They want traffic counts. They want the highway department's traffic counts. If you want a specialty restaurant, beverage store, something like that, they want rooftops. They don't care about how many cars are going down the street. They want to know how many customers of a certain income level live there so they can come buy their product. So, if we're planning to cut down the traffic, we will cut down certain businesses, because they're all about car counts. So, we need the economic plan before we start working on the traffic plan, so we know how we want to pursue.
Okay. I've got a motion and a second to table resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen to the second meeting in June. Any additional discussion on that topic? Seeing none. All those in favor of tabling, say yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no?
No.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
No.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Shin?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Motion fails. Um, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Second.
I, I need a motion first.
Oh, well, I thought that was a great motion. I'll make that motion and adopt it.
I've got a motion and second. Councilmember Mosley?
I was going to make the motion. That's all.
I've got a motion and a second to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes. All opposed, no?
No.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm a yes.
Motion fails. Uh, resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen is not approved. Just for the record, the planning studies report, which we're engaging with Metro Plan in, will con- will contain a traffic studies, uh, report on the state of the, or a transportation system, uh, uh, report. A roll call vote on the, um, motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash eighteen.
Councilmember Mosley, happy as a yes. Councilmember Gronwald?
No.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
No.
Councilmember Gardner?
No.
Councilmember Williams?
No.
Councilmember Tierney?
No.
Councilmember Shin?
No.
Councilmember Holt?
No.
Thank you, guys.
Okay. The next item of business is ordinance eleven twenty-seven to declare ordinance eleven seventeen an emergency.
It's eleven twenty-eight, sir.
Eleven twenty-eight. I've, uh, ordinance eleven twenty-eight to declare ordinance eleven seventeen an emergency. Madam City Clerk, if you could please read that by title only?
Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Monmeil, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eleven twenty-eight, an ordinance to declare an emergency, and to make ordinance eleven seventeen immediately effective and for other purposes.
This will be a fun one. So, this is the ordinance to, uh, um, just state that the, that prior ordinance one seventeen is an emergency. So, if, um, which would make it go into effect immediately. Amusingly, we're on the first reading of this ordinance. So, is there a, um, uh, I'd entertain an ordinance to waive the requirement and have the second and third reading of ordinance eleven twenty-eight today. Got a motion second to waive the three reading requirement. Have them all read tonight. Any discussion on that? Seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. Madam City Clerk, if you could please give the second and third reading to ordinance eleven twenty-eight.
Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Monmeil, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eleven twenty-eight, an ordinance to declare an emergency, and make ordinance number eleven seventeen immediately effective and for other purposes. Be it enacted by the city council of the city of Monmeil, county of Pulaski, state of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number eleven twenty-eight, an ordinance to declare an emergency, and make ordinance number eleven seventeen immediately effective and for other purposes.
At this time, I'd entertain a motion to adopt ordinance number eleven twenty-eight. I've got a motion and a second. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing none. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance eleven twenty-eight is adopted. However, this ordinance declaring the prior ordinance, or previous ordinance to be an emergency won't be effective unless we don't also declare this ordinance an emergency. So, at this time, I'd entertain a motion to declare ordinance eleven twenty-eight an emergency. I've got a motion and a second to declare ordinance eleven twenty-eight an emergency. Uh, madam city clerk, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yes.
Councilmember Gronwald?
Yes.
Councilmember Mazzoni?
Yes.
Councilmember Gardner?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Tierney?
Yes.
Councilmember Shin?
Yes.
Councilmember Holt?
Yes.
Motion passes. Ordinance eleven twenty-eight, which declares ordinance eleven seventeen an emergency, has been adopted and also declared an emergency. Move on to White Oak Crossing, um, or mayor's comments, which obviously I've revealed the first thing I'm going to mention, which is White Oak Crossing Roundabout. The, uh, roundabout construction has finally started. Um, it's, it's worth clapping, but it should have occurred back at the end of August. Uh, they, I actually physically, right before I, I, council meeting, I drove out there and made sure equipment was there and stuff was being worked on there. They were there working on it. So, uh, so they will have, um, um, through the end of the year to accomplish this. Um, so hopefully the roundabout will be completed, um, in early, early spring or late winter, depending on how you look at that. Um, pickleball courts, we were hoping to announce that we would be having the grand opening, um, next week. Um, it looks like we'll be pushing that back a week just to make sure, and, and that may, just be on the lookout for notification that we need ten solid rain-free days for them to do the top coating. So, uh, and then for that to cure before it can be used. So, be on the lookout for that. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Tierney?
Yeah, I just had a kind of a, you know, a housekeeping type of question. Uh, when we voted to do all three readings of eleven twenty-eight, we did not vote on that. We, well, we made a motion to pass all three, to do all three readings, but I don't believe we actually made a vote to do all three.
I, I believe we just did a voice, voice vote. I didn't, I didn't do a roll call.
All right.
Yeah.
I just wanted to make sure.
Okay. Thank, thank you. What, okay. Councilmember Mosley?
Uh, yeah, I'd brought up the idea of naming, um, Town Center Street, renaming it for Mark Lowry, and I just wanted to check with the mayor and see if he's had any time to think about that and see what he thinks.
I am, um, I, I, I'm not opposed to, well, first of all, in general, I'm not a huge fan of naming things after people. Uh, so I typically resist that the first couple of go rounds. Anyone who's, uh, asked about that knows that that's normally my stance. I don't, I'm not opposed to necessarily naming something after, um, Lowry. I don't know that, I, I, I like, Town Center is right in the Town Center, and I think it, it would be like renaming a Main Street or a Town Center Street. I'm not a huge fan of that. I, I know the reason why was because, uh, there's no addresses and it makes it simple. I'm not opposed to naming something after him. I just don't know, I, I'm not a fan of Town Center being Lowry Lane, or it actually has a good ring to it. Um, that's my thoughts.
All right. Come up with something, if you don't mind. Let's, I mean, he's, he's, uh, he's done, done well for us out here, and, uh, I think that'd be, be nice to honor him with something.
I'll, I'll think about it. Uh, I'll, I'll be trying to think of something and, and,
I'll think of something else. I'll try to think of something else.
Yeah. Uh, any additional councilmember comments? Um, city attorney comments? City clerk comments? City councilmember Mosley comments?
Yeah. I just, I just want to encourage everybody to, uh, go to the planning commission meetings. Uh, that's where you really learn stuff here in Monmeil. Uh, you find out what's going on. Um, you know, I think, I think councilmember Holt mentioned that he felt like some things were too complex coming to the council. Uh, I think that's a good way to, to get your head in the game before you come to council meeting. Thanks.
All right. Just, uh, if you haven't already seen it, pay attention to FYIs. It's Economic Development Week, uh, and Municipal Clerks Week. So, without further ado, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to adjourn the city council meeting of May sixth, twenty twenty-four.
I've got a motion.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
All opposed, no. Motion carries. I didn't ask if there was any discussion on that motion, but.